This is this one.
Oh, you both. Wow.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah, Frank just moved there. He said he took on a journey for Christmas.
Wow, that's exciting.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think anyone beat that one around here, so.
So I'm taking a cross course in Polish. I know how to say dwa piva. It's two beer screens.
Oh, I like that. That's important.
Yeah.
Before he was walking.
Well, shall we proceed without Ted? Give him a couple more.
They didn't. See if someone walking up right now. So let's get him through the board.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for November 13th, 2014. And I'd like to record to show all the commissioners are here as well as staff. And so if you would join me in the salute to the flag. You just sat down, Ted. May I have a second?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes?
None.
Okay. Our next order of business is a public comment period, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the planning commission on a land use issue that is not on our agenda this morning, this would be your opportunity. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, our next item of business is the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from October 23rd, planning commission meeting. Are there any revisions, corrections to the minutes?
No.
All right, a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, consent now, the approval of the minutes. So our next item of business is our public hearings, and it's my understanding that our public hearing for the Ladatos has been continued.
Well, it needs to be continued, but because there was no public hearing, we'll open up the public hearing and then ask you to continue it.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing for project 2014-032, tentative parcel map for Jim and Catherine Ladato. It's a tentative parcel map to divide 4.78 acres into two parcels, one acre and a 3.7 acres in size. And the property is located at 1478 Gold Hunter Road in San Andreas. So I guess I'll turn this over to Darcy.
Good morning, commissioners. Darcy Clark with the planning department. As you noted, this item is requested to be continued due to some last minute information that we received from CPUD regarding availability of water for the site. Next week, we anticipate meeting with them to come up with a timeline or really what their approach is. So at this time, we're just requesting that the item be continued off calendar until there's a resolution to the water issue.
All right, any questions to Darcy? Is there anyone in the applicant or the applicant's agent or anyone in the public would like to speak regarding this issue?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com. This is really interesting. Read this, trying to figure out what was going on here. Just wondering if the planning department knows if this state water resources control board compliance order applied or applies only to CPUD or is this something that applies to all of the water districts? I don't know if you've seen a copy of the order.
Yes, I have reviewed that. It does apply only to CPUD.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I know they can issue orders just for particular districts. Okay, good, then that means it's not going to affect hopefully other parcel applications.
Hopefully not.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and then do we need a motion to continue the this item to a date uncertain?
It's been moved second.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is 2012-004 miscellaneous amendments to Title 17 related to implementation of the housing element of the general plan. The county proposes to amend Title 17 to add definitions for emergency shelter, supportive housing, target population, and transitional housing at a section to the general regulations to recognize transitional housing and supportive housing as a residential use and subject to the same requirements. Amend the R2 and R3 zoning districts to clarify state licensing requirements for group homes. Amend the C1 and C2 zoning districts to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use and add development standards for the same. And amend the waiver section to provide for reasonable accommodations for the disabled. Shall I continue with the rest? Might as well. The proposed amendments to Title 17 are exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061 subsection B3. The activity is covered by the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility, the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to CEQA. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
Thank you. So this is sort of an omnibus bill, I suppose you could say, to kind of cover a lot of ground. And just as background, in 2010, the county adopted a housing element. And in that element, there are a number of policies and programs and implementation programs. Unfortunately, due to probably the focus on getting the rest of the general plan updated, none of these measures have actually moved forward. We're now in the process of our required annual five-year review, and our consultant had pointed out that the state will not look fondly upon us if we do not show some effort to, you know, moving forward with some of the programs we've identified before. So we, I reviewed the housing element implementation program to see which programs we could do that were fairly simple, and these were sort of came from the list. There is attachment three in your staff report that shows the policies and programs that are being addressed in this, and I assume that you guys have all looked at that. So they're really relatively minor in nature. Some of them are technical to change language to comply with state law, case law. And if you'd like, we just sort of walk through some of the changes and sort of explain what is happening. So if you turn to attachment one, which is the draft ordinance itself, I also passed out an additional sheet of paper. Thank you, Fawn Kelly, for reviewing it closely and pointing out some things that were maybe inconsistent or you had questions on. And so this additional sheet, and I have extra copies here for the public if anyone would like to see what those are as well. I'll just sort of walk through the ordinance and address the changes at the same time. So in the header itself, it was pointed out that we use the term handicapped and disabled interchangeably. Commissioner Gofflin suggested that we use the term disabled more, just be consistent. It seems to be the terms more rarely used. So I've made two changes where the word handicapped is replaced with disabled, both in the header as well as the section, the finding section. So then the first change that's being proposed is the definition of family. And this is probably the most confusing component of this, because it doesn't seem to really reflect what most people would think of as family. You know, when you think of family, you think of people being related by blood or marriage in some way or another or adoption. But the case law in a number of cases over the years has, for the purpose of zoning, has redefined what family means. And there have been attempts over years by various cities or counties to prohibit people living together, say as three college students renting a house. And so there's been some broad interpretation of family, which is basically people sharing a living quarters. And so that's primarily what we've done, is just redefining the family for the purpose of zoning, you know, has, doesn't change any other use of that word, but for the use of our zoning code, a family is basically anyone sharing, you know, common living area. So that's the purpose of that change. And if you need to, I can give you some citations and court cases and all that kind of fun stuff. The federal and state regulations are so confusing as to almost sort of be meaningless. I'm just going to try to quote some state laws. I'm more confused after reading it than I was before. So that's the purpose of the change in family. The emergency shelter provision is a requirement of HCD, that we provide some location in the county where such shelters are allowed by right. And typically, they are for homeless, but they also could be for a domestic violence shelter or even some other emergency housing. Say there's a catastrophe, there's flooding or a fire, and people are out of their homes and have no place to go, that there could be, we could also establish some homeless shelter for that purpose. So it's, one of the changes that I have suggested here was that we add language at the end of that, so occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person, comma, a person fleeing domestic violence, or a person needing emergency housing due to natural disaster. And if there's any other ideas we want to put in there, people that might need housing, open to suggestions, but I think that pretty much covers the basic intent of these changes. Supportive housing, target housing, target population, and transitional housing are all requirements of state law. Just plug those definitions in so that when we use them in the code in other locations, we have clear definition what that is. Under target population, there was, the end of that was a list of various types of people that could be considered target populations. Commissioner Wooster suggested that that was perhaps confusing as well as unnecessary, and after talking with the housing consultant yesterday agreed, so we're striking, proposing that we strike that last phrase after the "and may include" section.
Peter, can I add that for one second?
Sure.
I'm just looking, I'm going back to the emergency shelter, and I'm just wondering if we need to target or to limit it to natural disaster. I mean, how about just disaster? I mean, there could be other disasters other than just natural disasters. Terrorism, I mean, there could be a lot of.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Man-made disasters.
We could just strike the word natural.
Tight line that blows up.
Something, you know, so it may not be natural, but it could be a disaster.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. So that ends the discussion on definitions. If there are any questions on definitions, otherwise I'll move forward.
Excuse me. Is there going to be a two?
Will there be an opportunity to?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
So the next section.
I wonder if it shouldn't say "or similar situation" or something, because it seems like we're saying these are the three reasons in which, and I should be leaning forward and speaking into my mic.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, it just seems like we don't really know what the situation might be that would require someone to use emergency shelter.
Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
I'll play with that language a little bit while we have the hearing process. So then moving on to the R2 and R3, we added the term state license group to group home, just so it's clear that the provision that we already had requires state licensing. It's just not someone decided on creating a group home. It sort of narrows the focus a little bit. In the, so the next section is where we actually apply the ability to have an emergency shelter, and that is in the C1 and C2 zones, so we're just adding that use as a use that's permitted. Trying to remember where it's, okay, 1704 are the, that's the section of the code that has this sort of a list of unique circumstances, sort of special uses. So where we address different things, sort of has the standards that, for that particular use here are the standards. So there's a long list of different uses in chapter 1704. So we've just clarified that transitional supportive housing is allowed use wherever it's residential uses, and again, that's just something that's required of state law. So the longest section of this is the standards for emergency shelters. And they, by state law, they need to be by right. So what we've tried to do is create standards that they have to meet in order to be allowed by right. There were a couple of changes and some discussion that we've had. So under B3, wanted to amend that, striking the non-inake hours of operation, and also adding some language that sort of brought, provides that broader component of who's being served by these shelters. Commissioner McLaughlin, you had brought up some issues about what seemed to be maybe the inconsistency in some things that were very specific, you know, they had to have these up front, and here's what you have to have versus more general standards that, the idea here was that we weren't trying to dictate how they were operating unless we had some very specific requirements. We just wanted to make sure that they had a plan and that it was, it made sense. So it's, I don't think that I or anyone in the county really has the capacity to establish the types of ground rules that they would have in place, other than, you know, we don't want loitering, we don't want, you know, the certain hours of operation, we don't want lighting, you know, to spill out everywhere. But as long as they had a plan of, you know, what their, you know, staff to capacity ratio might be or some of these other things. That's why there were some things that were clearly set standards and others were just, we want to know that you are addressing these things. So two, four, five, and eight are sort of, you're going to have a policy. We're not going to tell you what the policy is, but you need to have a policy of how you're going to operate this, and it needs to make sense. But there's no specific standards. So for example, eight says pets, they can have a pet policy. We're not going to establish what that policy is, but it needs to be in your operating plan. So that's why there's some difference between those two.
Versus like B1 is very prescriptive and says, there will be, there shall be a manager on site at all times.
Right. Right. So that's why there's some difference between those provisions. So with that, those are the, sort of going through the changes and changes made at the last minute based on your telephone calls and emails. So this will be going up to the board, assuming that you forward a recommendation, whatever you decide to modify it, next month. We have one other ordinance that I'm working on that I intend to bring to you in December. That would be a density bonus ordinance, which is sort of the last item that we need to address. That one, we have to look at a little more closely. I think it has some, a little more potential for some controversy. Also, I need to look at the environmental impacts of that a little more closely. As you indicated in reading the agenda item, we felt that this really did not have any potential for environmental impact, therefore we are recommending that the general will apply in this case. As I had mentioned in the joint meeting last month, we're pushing forward the housing element so we can move to an eight-year cycle. We need to get all this adopted and reviewed by the state and certified by April. So it's sort of the reason why we're moving this forward now. The original plan was to push it back, contain it with the rest of the general plan, but the desire to move forward more rapidly sort of is to push this more to the forefront. So with that, I recommend that you forward a recommendation to the board to adopt this ordinance. I think it is the point in time to open, or if you have any questions for me, then open up the public hearing.
Are there any questions to Peter?
Yeah, I have a question about the reasonable accommodation waivers or to waive certain standards because reasonable accommodation. And I'm curious what land use or zoning issue is likely. I mean, I'm familiar with that terminology for multifamily housing, where a landowner or landlord has to make reasonable accommodations for a potential tenant, but it seems like there are very few land use or zoning issues short of having to put a, you know, because of the length of a ramp extending into a setback, I really can't.
That's about the only thing that it would probably apply to.
Okay.
So you have an existing house, someone is suddenly wheelchair-bound, they need to put a ramp in, they can't, you know, meet the setback requirements, that would be the most likely situation. I did review this with the building official. We really couldn't think of any other situation that might apply, but there could be some. And so it's sort of general in terms so that.
There could be with parking to get a level parking area. I mean, I can see some issues, but very, very few.
Very limited, yes.
And then the use of the term ADA accessibility isn't really accurate in California, because California has its own accessibility codes, so you might want to say state and federally mandated accessibility codes or guidelines or, and the federal isn't actually a code, it's part of civil rights legislation, but guidelines, and so it's very messy.
Which section was that?
Well, I'm just, I don't know where it is in here. I'm just noticing it in the summary. It says ADA accessibility, and I didn't really know whether it was.
Oh.
Just if we're going to mention accessibility, we should tie it to our state's requirements, not just the federal requirements. Although theoretically, they are one and the same as of today. Probably not true. They're not quite. And then I just had sort of the same thing that Fawn mentioned. It seems like some of these items are specific and some are broad, and I, you're just trying to say you're going to need to address these issues.
Right.
And yet there are some that are sort of non-negotiable. There are ones like, you will have a manager on site.
Exactly.
Right. And like, there's a specific number of showers and toilets.
Yeah, so that was my question. It's like, it seems like we're being very prescriptive in some of these and then also, and then it just, tell us what your intent is, how are you going to address this? So I was wondering how that was developed, why some were very prescriptive and.
Well, in some cases, we felt it was very important. You shall have a manager on site at all times. The, for example, the shower requirement was, you know, there is a standard that exists in building code that we were trying to, you know, make sure that people were aware of. In others, we felt it was important to address them, but I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time trying to come up with prescriptive standards because the situation could vary depending on what the purpose of the homeless shelter is, whether there's, you know, it's for male and female, or it's family and children, it's, you know, variety, you know, different kinds of situations that depending on the purpose of the shelter could, it could vary. And I didn't feel I had the knowledge to know what the appropriate standard would be. And there was, and didn't really want to spend a lot of time, didn't think it was necessary to spend a lot of time trying to come up with prescriptive standards where it didn't seem to be really serving the county's needs to have these standards. So where a shelter might have had an impact on surrounding land uses, we developed the shelters to make sure it wouldn't. But it was just more of an internal operational standards that, you know, we just wanted to make sure that they had those. So that's, that's the difference. And if I miss the target, then feel free to amend away.
There's two specific things that I was curious what the source for them was. One was the .4 parking spaces per occupancy limit, because I don't see how that applies to staff. I mean, it seems low. You could assume that maybe people needing an emergency shelter don't have cars, but you.
Sometimes that's all they have.
Staff people, and sometimes that is all they, I just wonder if there was some, if it came from someplace, somebody has determined that that's a good number, because you'd hate to have spillover from this facility impacting the commercial businesses. I could see that as a potential conflict. And then I was curious about the 300 feet from an existing emergency shelter. We just, we only want one per block.
Those standards were recommended by the consultant, and I'm speculating that the 300 feet is probably the, you know, minimum requirement of state law or suggested by state law. And if you'd like, I could research that and make sure there's an answer before I go to the board on that. Or, you know, if you really have trouble with it, we can continue.
No, I was just curious. I mean, in some cases, it might seem like it would make sense to have two facilities close to each other for convenience, and to say you can't have it.
If it doesn't really matter.
And send staffs them around the community.
I think that typically, communities don't want to see them.
All clustered together.
All clustered around.
They don't want to create a potential total spot.
An enclave, yeah.
Yeah. So I was just curious about the two items. I don't know enough about them to have any real idea what the right number is.
Right.
And I noticed here, when it talks about reasonable accommodations later, it talks about the Fair Housing Act, which is appropriate.
Any other questions to Peter?
Just one. This definition of family, has county council looked at this and advised that this is required by the case law?
Council has reviewed the draft ordinance.
Because it doesn't read like any family that normal people would think was a family.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this item?
Good morning. Marty Crane. And space and tilt make a difference. So, thank you so much. First of all, I don't think it can go one more day without saying thank you, because you know I attend a lot of different styles and functions of meetings for different causes and subjects. And this planning commission, you don't limit yourself on the number of minutes or time that you can designate to a subject. You fully vet it, you fully dissect everything and do it with passion and concern for the community, and I want to thank you for that. I don't, I don't know that, anyway, thank you for that. And also, back on, we changed it from handicapped to disabled, but I think we need to go one step further and say, when you say handicapped or when you say disabled, you're saying this is a disability, this is a handicap, oh, and there's a person attached to it. It's really the person with a disability. That's the proper way to do it, and we'll end up having to change it again if we don't do it now. So as long as we're changing it, perhaps we could just address that and say.
So you're saying instead of disabled.
Persons with disabilities. Persons with, so that's the person first. And then on the, thank you for, Fawn, for bringing up similar uses. I'm involved a lot with issues with Red Cross and Public Health. I'm involved a lot with issues with Red Cross and public health. Public health, you know, there can be all kinds of public emergencies, and we don't want them to turn into disasters. So having a shelter that could be available for specific things, and we don't know exactly what those are going to be, is, is a real gift. And then I recently reread the Housing Element again, and so thank you for bringing this. Also, I'm really involved with Red Cross, and we do shelter surveys throughout, whenever we can get a team together and go and check out the vets hall and do a shelter survey, and it's very extensive. And then they write up contracts, so that if there's an emergency, we can use that as a, an emergency shelter. But having these as well could be good. And they, the Red Cross has their own ground rules, and everything is laid out, and, but the contracts take into consideration the owner of the facility as well. So, and there's always someone on, there are many people on site in those cases. And I think that might have been, but thank you very much. Space makes all the difference. I know, I forgot, I got way back here.
Anyone else?
Well, I do fully support the idea about the persons or people with disabilities. I think we should, you know, do that, make that, make that change in this ordinance, in this draft ordinance.
Any other discussion?
We see this a lot, but in this ordinance under section one, out of the evidence, it starts off, SEQA guidelines 15061B3 excludes projects, et cetera. That first sentence is absolutely accurate. The second sentence is where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant question, effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA. That too comes right out of the SEQA guidelines. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's actually correct, because sometimes agencies issue guidelines that tend to expand their jurisdiction. So they're taking, have control over more things. The way this reads, it looks as if this is what the planning commission or the board is sure the law requires. And, you know, nothing is certain but death and taxes. It's hard to say that where it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that something won't occur. That's difficult, maybe impossible. My suggestion would be to make it clear that all we're doing here is we're telling folks what the SEQA guidelines state, not necessarily that this is our judgment about what the rules require. And so I would be more comfortable if it said something like, on the second sentence, section 15061B3 states that, where it can be seen with certainty, et cetera. Perhaps technical, but this one's bothered me for a while because it's an extremely high standard to meet. I mean, we put people in prison when the standard's beyond reasonable doubt, not whether you can see it with certainty that there's no possibility that he's not guilty.
I thought the same thing when I read it. Here we go again, with absolutely no possibility. I guess there's no possibility that the paper itself, you know, the written is going to, but there's certainly, we can't foresee what projects would, or situations would come out of this.
Well, the judgment call on this is whether or not you feel comfortable that there is not a possibility that these changes would result in a significant environmental effect. It, it makes a change, you know, but it, you know, and, yeah, the, the language of the guidelines is very, very precise. And I don't figure how to phrase this properly. I am comfortable in making that finding, otherwise I wouldn't be recommending this to you, that these changes, I cannot foresee how they could result in an environmental impact. And so, based on that now-
The changes to the language themselves.
Right.
Well, but I think you need to look beyond just the changes in language itself. Obviously, you know, the changes on paper don't have an environmental effect, other than maybe printing more paper. But, you know, the result of these changes and how that might evolve into, you know, what comes on the ground, that an emergency shelter is now allowed by right in a community in a certain commercial zone, you know, could that have a significant environmental effect? Well, so you sort of roll that out, you know, if someone comes in and applications, I want to build a shelter. The, the other uses that are allowed in that zone have sort of an equal potential effect. So by allowing shelters, we're not creating any additional potential for an effect. The issues associated, and there are more social impacts and there are environmental impacts, but having homeless people congregate in an area are addressed through the standards, therefore, we, I don't feel that those would have an effect. And so I've sort of gone through this analysis. How do each one of these changes in the code, when they are applied on the ground, how would they affect the environment? And my conclusion is they won't. And that's why I feel comfortable in making that finding, even though it is so absolute that it's, you know, I could be wrong. And I think that that's the judgment called on, on any kind of environmental reviews. Here's our best analysis, our best guess of what's going to happen in the future. And even if you do an EIR, you could be wrong. You know, there could be unforeseen circumstances, you just didn't, you know, think that this would happen, and, you know, but I think that in this case, the possibility is so limited that I feel certain that there'd be no possibility of an environmental effect because of these code changes.
I think Kelly is just saying, partially just to clarify, that this wording is straight out of state law.
Right, right.
And then the, the other thing is, you know, do we say something like, none of the proposed amendments could reasonably be anticipated to create an additional impact to the environment? Or, you know, something different than what we already have, because we already have the potential for an environmental impact. And can you do anything?
Well, that's what that second paragraph was trying to sort of walk through each of the changes and how, why I summarized my finding of why I don't believe it's going to have an impact.
But I, I think just, Kelly was suggesting that we can soften that to say, we can't reasonably anticipate that it would, but we, we can't say absolutely nothing will, because how would we ever know? And I think with the emergency shelter, with the idea that there could be an additional environmental impact, but it's not additional over what you could have if a church is overrun, or the Native Suns Hall, or anything in an emergency, you have a ton of people congregating, there could definitely be environmental impacts that are not anticipated. Really, this emergency shelter is not that kind of emergency shelter, so it probably has less of potential than the Red Cross folks, you know, using a existing church that doesn't have any facilities set up really for it. But, but I, I can, I can see that softening the language does-
Well, I agree with Commissioner Worcester's recommendation to add that phrase, just to clarify that this is what state law says, and here's how we believe that we satisfy these requirements.
Well, it's, it's what the guidelines say.
Right.
And I think what you've done in the next paragraph basically answers Michelle's concerns, because you do compare this to the other impacts that are already allowed by right.
So are we ready for the recommendation?
So we recommend that you pass a motion to sign resolution 2014-027, recommending that the Board of Supervisors find that the proposed ordinance amendment is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15061B3 of SEQA guidelines, and adopt an ordinance amending title 17. That includes the changes recommended by me in the additional handout, as well as adding or modifying the language in the last, in the title, reasonable accommodations for disabled persons.
Oh, you might put persons with, with disabilities.
Persons with everything, mentally ill, homeless.
Right.
Or, and all of it.
I think the point was, was to put people first, people with disabilities, or persons with disabilities.
Yeah.
Persons with disabilities, so the emphasis on the person, not the disability.
Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
So maybe we can just put persons with disabilities, and just be consistent wherever that reference is made.
Can I just say that it may not matter to a lot of people, but to people who are in fact, it matters right now.
Yeah, so I think, and it's a-
So then in the evidence section of section 1.3, where we have homeless, disabled, mentally ill, and other residents, these are persons after each one of those, or is residence, does it satisfy the concern that, I mean, essentially, it's a, it's an adjective, that describe residents.
Where are you? I, it, when you read through the whole thing, it says with red.
Yeah, I think just, just whenever you say, instead of disabled, it's just persons with disabilities.
But it's not just disabled people. I don't think that was what Marty was saying. I mean, it's homeless people.
Yes.
It's people with, who need the services for any reason.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So I'm just not sure how you would like to amend that, that sentence.
Well, I could suggest that sentence could read, the proposed amendments would provide greater access to housing for persons who are homeless, disabled, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay, that works.
Or, yeah, proposed amendments would have greater access to housing for, it might be easier, just persons with disabilities, homeless, mentally ill, and other residents of the county.
Yeah?
Your choice, I don't, I would go with what Kelly has suggested. I think it's-
So what was that again?
Persons who are-
Persons who are homeless, disabled, mentally ill.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But other references in here where we just mentioned disabled, if there are, I don't know that there are, but that would be persons with disabilities.
Okay. Let's see, under section 17060783, emergency shelter, we're striking the word natural and adding, or other-
Or just get rid of natural.
Well, but it's-
Can't you?
But there's other reasons besides disasters.
Or reasonable-
And domestic abuse, so we were just saying, or similar situations. And whatever reason they might need it.
Okay, that will work.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works. And I think those were all of the changes that we discussed.
Did we capture Kelly's last one with the-
Oh, yes.
Section 15061B3 states that, where it can be seen with certainty, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance to the board with the amendments, as we've just reviewed? So, and we'll give it to Ted, and then Michelle second. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Very good job, Peter.
Thank you. Moving on to our next ordinance amendment. This is sort of an interesting situation. This is an amendment to, I don't know, do you want to read the-
That's, no, go ahead.
Okay. It's amendment title 17, to modify chapter 17.64 related to the requirements for entering into a development agreement. We also find this would be exempt pursuant to SEQA, front of the general rule finding. So the, we've been in discussion with individuals that are interested in applying for a development agreement. And as they were inquiring as to what was required, we discovered some interesting anomalies with our code. And primarily, it's that when we enter into a development agreement, we're supposed to rezone the property to development agreement zone. The interesting thing is, we do not have a development agreement zone, except in that one reference in the code. So we initially started to just do a fairly simple change to eliminate that provision. And we've never done that with any other, any of the DAs that we've had. Now, most of the DAs usually come along with a larger project, such as a specific plan. And in most cases in the past, those specific plans have proposed their own zoning. But it's not a DA zoning, they have the Saddle Creek residential zone, or whatever it might be. So we initially started to simply delete that provision, and as we looked into it more, we found some other things. And then I remembered that former county council, Janice Elliott, had a draft ordinance amendment that she prepared a few years ago. And so we pulled that out, and that is the bulk of the changes that are made to just update our requirements, and just to make sure that we have fairly consistent standards that applicants know what's required, and the county has firm grounds to negotiate the terms of development agreement. My position on development agreements is, this is a deal we're making, so what's in it for the county? And unfortunately, in the past, and this happens throughout most rural counties, we're not very sophisticated when it comes to negotiating these things. And the applicant writes them, and we look at them and says, well, I don't see any harm in it, so I guess it's okay. And then we realize we've sort of given away the farm and didn't get anything in return. So we should take a lesson from some of the cities that have been very aggressive in negotiating these DAs, and have gotten things additional to what they would normally have. Because these are, it's an agreement, we don't have to enter into these. They, you know, they've, they've got their entitlements under subdivision, or specific plan, or any other entitlement that we might grant them. So they're asking for more, so we should also get something in return for that. And so this language just provides us a little stronger bargaining position, as well as clearly lays out what's required and what should be in agreement. So unless you have questions on any of the specifics of the requirements, I would recommend that you adopt a resolution, recommend the Board of Supervisors take the following action, find that the proposed ordinance revision is exempt from SEQA pursuant to 15061B3, and adopt the ordinance amending chapter 1764 of the county code.
Are there any questions, Peter?
I have questions, of course. Okay, good. It looks like this is saying that the only time you could have a development agreement is when you're doing a planned development combining zone. I mean, it says that, submitted to include the property within the planned development combining district.
What section are you looking at?
I am looking 17.64.080 application procedure, and there's ABC, and it's something that was added.
All right, you can, 7.64?
Oh, I'm sorry, 64090, minimum requirements. And it was changed to take out or development agreement designation. Just not quite sure what the goal is there. I mean, I think it, it is true that oftentimes, development agreements are things that have a PD added to them.
But not necessarily.
But not necessarily.
I might need to caucus with council on this one for a minute to see what, what we should do with that. I'm almost thinking of striking that section, but I'm not sure what the ramification of that is. I'm not sure that it really does anything for us. Were there any other questions or issues that we need to-
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple others. And this one is just, I reread the sentence, and it's the one right above that, which talks about issuing development permits for a project for which a development agreement is proposed. Prior to the effective date of the agreement, provided the development permit is consistent with the provisions of the title. I, I don't understand what you're trying to say there, but maybe.
Typically, what we'll see is, as a project goes through the application review process, that they propose a DA along with it. So it's all approved at one time. You approve the specific plan, and the tentative map, and any other entitlement along with the development agreement. the development agreement. What this is trying to say is that they don't have to have, it doesn't have to go concurrently. They could, while we're still negotiating the development agreement, proceed with the entitlement approval, be it a subdivision map or a zone change or something like that. They don't have to wait until the DA has approved. In the case of the anticipated application we're getting, this is an older subdivision that's been on the books for a number of years, and they would like to extend the time of that subdivision. So they're already sort of entitled to do so, not something. So. There might be a clearer way to say this, but sort of a little bit of.
Clarified a little bit.
Legalese in there, too.
And then I have one other item. It's on the next seventeen point six four point one oh five. And you've mentioned this, unless otherwise specified in the development agreement, saying, ordinances, rules, regulations, and official policies that govern the permitted uses of land density and design, improvement and construction standards and specifications, and that are enacted subsequent to execution of a deal, development agreement shall not be enforced against the subject property. I'm not sure, I think that building codes need to be enforced at the time that a building permit is applied for, and you can't, you can't give a subdivision the right to use an old building code or any other portion of the building codes, like energy codes. It doesn't seem like that would really want to be the intent here. And I'm not sure it was the intent, but it's kind of implied.
Yes, it would, it would read that way. I know that most of the DAs that I have worked with in the past will specify that changes to building code are not subject to these changes. So that, you know, the first, the phrase, unless.
We could just add that clarification.
Unless, agreement is mutually agreed upon. But I don't know if, because I know, for example, you have a vesting tentative map that you're vested at the time that map is deemed complete, even to building code requirements. So you can be vested under an older building code.
Not from building code requirements.
Not sure of that.
I mean, I've been through this. You don't get to do that.
You don't get a, get out of jail free on building codes.
You don't get to get out of jail. If somebody drag, especially, say you have a large subdivision and the developer is not building every one of the houses, so he's not pulling the permits for it, it could be twenty years down the road when somebody goes in and goes to get a building permit for a residence or, you know, in a business park, a building. And they need to comply with the building codes at the time they apply for their building permit.
Right, I agree with that. But under a vesting tentative map, I believe that you are vested under whatever standards, including the building code, at the time. But those usually only last for two years. They're not a lengthy period of time. The DA typically is a twenty-year agreement, and so we could face that situation. Maybe we could take a five-minute recess and I could discuss it with counsel and just see what, you know, what kind of language changes we need to.
I just think we don't want it, regardless of what is possible to do, we don't want to set building codes in stone at the time of a development agreement for, over such a long period of time. It doesn't really make any sense. Building codes are modified for a reason.
Right.
Shall we take a five-minute recess?
Are there any other questions or concerns that anyone else has on this, that we can address them all at once and not before we recess?
I'm thrilled to see we won't be rezoning every parcel.
Yes.
Well, this is on the same section. Michelle was just speaking to seventeen point six four point one oh five. And very first part, A, says unless otherwise specified in the development agreement is mutually agreed upon, and it goes on, it should also say at that point, and except is provided in B two below. Because B two is the section that allows you to apply new rules if you meet the criteria there. So regardless of what you do, following Michelle's comments, just to be internally consistent, I think you need to make that change. And then following up on Michelle's comment in B two little three, there's a way for the county to enforce new ordinances, rules, regulations, and policies that are necessary to address a significant and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. That could be a bit of a litigation breeder. Because, you know, I guess a court would have to decide.
What is a threat?
What is. And so when you're speaking to counsel about this, that ties into Michelle's comment.
Right. These seem to allow you to do it, but then they seem like they could become
Areas of.
Areas of disagreement of what is intended.
And then under seven point six four point oh seven oh, A says, "A development agreement shall take effect upon date of recordation with the county clerk following board supervisor's approval." And I assume the developer is the one who takes it out and gets it recorded. So unless it has a specific termination date in the agreement, he could just fail to record it for however long, I suppose, thereby extending the effective term of the agreement.
Typically, they have to be recorded within like fifteen days, something very short.
And this would be something the county would probably record because it's a county's agreement as well. It's not just, you know, so it's between the county and developer.
It's mutual, yeah.
Mutual. So we would ensure that the recordation happens immediately.
But maybe it should say that it has to be recorded within some periods, that it's.
There, it's clear that it's not like you can dilly-dally and wait months or years.
Okay, a couple more minor ones. Seventeen point six four point oh eight oh, under A, it says, "To initiate proceedings, the project proponent shall submit a request in writing to the planning director to prepare development agreement," which sounds as if the request is that the planning director has to prepare it. The second sentence makes it clear that anybody can. But it would be clearer if the words "to prepare" were changed to the single word "for." It's what we, "Submit a request in writing to the planning department for a development agreement." And then on seventeen point six four point oh nine oh, minimum requirements, I'll strike that, seventeen point six four one hundred, says, "A development agreement shall, as a minimum, address the following issues where applicable." I'm not sure the phrase "at a minimum" works with the phrase "where applicable." I think it's got to be one or the other.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So you're sure five minutes is going to do it?
I don't know, you tell us.
It's a big topic.
Ten fifteen?
Okay, looks like we're ready to reconvene the planning commission meeting.
Okay, I've taken the commissioner's recommendations into consideration and.
Could you please state your name for the.
Oh, sorry, Julie Moss Lewis. I'm deputy county council.
Thank you.
And so Peter and I were talking about how to incorporate some of your recommendations, and I'd like to go through them one by one. So looking at seventeen six four oh eight oh, application procedure.
Seventeen six four oh eight oh.
May I apologize for not putting page numbers on this.
Okay.
Okay, subsection A, there was a concern about the second line, "to prepare." I would like to recommend that we keep that language, simply because the hope was that the county would be preparing at least some sort of template development agreement in order to increase our bargaining power, rather than starting with one that is provided by the developer. So I thought that by saying "to prepare" for the planning director to prepare, that would suggest to the applicant that we would be starting with our template.
And when I reread that, it just, it just says they're requesting that one be prepared. It doesn't really say by who, and the next sentence kind of clarifies it. So I think it's okay how it is. It's just kind of an awkward sentence.
Okay, and then to reduce some of the P words and tongue twister language in subsection C, we thought in the second line, replacing the word prior with before, so that it reads "A project proponent may apply for and the county may issue development permits for a project for which a development agreement is proposed before the effective date of the agreement." The idea is that they can start early. And then.
It seems like, though, in that case, you would need to somehow document that there is a development agreement coming attached to those permits. Because if you allow the permits and they get started with no development agreement.
They're not subject to the DA. If they move ahead before that, then they would not necessarily be subject to the DA.
Right.
Unless the DA somehow incorporated those into, so that would be part of the negotiation that would occur during.
It would depend what, if the development agreement was giving them additional benefits, it would be in their best interest to complete that development agreement. You just wouldn't want the development permits to allow something.
If they didn't come through with the.
If they didn't come through with the agreement.
That they could still move forward on.
Yeah. It seems messy.
So any suggestions from the planning commission about changing that?
I just.
I think that it's unlikely that an applicant working on a big project with the intent of having a development would move forward. This provision is there so that in that event, they could, if they wanted to, but I think it's probably unlikely, unless it's a unique situation where you already have a project approval and there's something coming up that might put that into jeopardy, you know, something outside of the control of the developer or the county, and we're both, you know, mutually wanting to have that, that project to be able to move forward in the future under certain circumstances. And we want to make sure that, you know, that that could occur. I'm trying to think of a scenario. I really can't think of one that would happen. But I think that someone does have a vested right to move forward with the project that's already approved, as long as they're consistent with the code and consistent with the project approvals. That just because they had decided they want to also negotiate to the affidavit, a development agreement shouldn't necessarily restrict their ability to move forward with the project that's already approved.
Doesn't the last part of that solve the problem where it says, "Provided that the development permit is consistent with the provisions of this title and any previously approved development entitlements?"
That was the point that I was trying to make.
And we can get rid of another P by changing it to "so long as the development permit is consistent."
Yep. The Ps are, yeah, they just read difficultly, but they don't bother me. I see an issue that, so this development agreement requires them to set aside land for a park or whatever. So they can move forward with it, what if their permits don't show that because they're for other portions? I mean, I guess I see that this is a very messy situation, depending on how entangled the benefits being provided by the development agreement are with the actual design of the project.
So the concern being that they would be entitled to build their homes and, or business park or whatever, and in that development agreement, there is a set aside for a library or school or a park, and that they don't complete the development agreement, therefore, what happens?
And are they entitled?
This would occur before the development agreement is entered into. And so if they're moving forward the project and then they want to stop at some point and say, okay, well, we want a development agreement, we would have the ability to say, well, you know, you've already developed a third of your project, so that would all be a component of the agreement. It's not like they get to do these things unilaterally. The county negotiates with them.
I guess, I think that.
So does it even need to be there?
Provided the development permit is consistent with the provisions of this title, well, why would it need to be, if you're going to allow them the permit anyway, it doesn't have to be consistent with the provisions of this title.
Well, this title means the whole zoning code.
Oh, okay. No, you're not talking about this.
Not just this.
The development agreement section, okay. And any previously approved development entitlements.
That could be a subdivision or conditional use permit or any other permits that have been issued.
There would be no prohibition against the planning department enforcing conditions of a permit or any other negotiated entitlement prior.
I guess I just don't see how it makes sense if, but again, it depends what things are in the development agreement and what things are in the permit.
So just for clarification on this term.
As long as nothing in the permit is dependent upon their performance of something in the development agreement, it doesn't matter. It's fine, they're entitled to do it anyway.
So this is a revision to language that was in the prior section, actually, effective date of development agreements, B, which was struck out. And we thought that was even more confusing, and it was in the wrong location. So we moved that down to the application procedure and reworded it to try to make it clearer. I don't know if it is necessary to have it in there. It was a clarification of a previous term that says it's okay to move forward with your development project while you're negotiating a development agreement. I think the absence of that language, and Julie, correct me if you think I'm wrong here, doesn't, would not necessarily preclude someone from doing that anyway. Nothing in the text that I see says that if you're starting to negotiate a development agreement, everything stops. So if there's some concern about this language, we could just strike it entirely, and I don't think it has a material effect on the ordinance.
I agree with Peter on that.
I, that was my original thought, is why do we even have it? I'm not quite sure that it adds anything.
Okay, we can, so we strike that.
Is there consensus there?
Sure, I think so.
And then we talked about seventeen sixty four oh nine oh, and we have no objection to striking that entire section. Going down to seventeen sixty four one hundred, we don't have an objection to striking the last clause, "where applicable," so that it reads, "A development agreement shall, at a minimum, address the following issues." I think the original thought there was that there might be some developments that don't trigger every single factor that's discussed in here, but I'm assuming that they can simply say, number eight doesn't apply to my situation, and we would be fine. So that's, so that's okay. Seventeen sixty four one oh five, vesting in governing ordinances, rules, regulations, and official policies. In order to address the concern about referencing B two, we could, we propose the following language, have the sentence read, "Except as specified in subsection B two below, comma, or unless otherwise specified in the development agreement, et cetera." That's the proposed change. With respect to the issue of building codes, while we did not fully come up with an answer yet in fifteen minutes about whether or not building codes are locked in for vesting tentative maps, we could certainly have our ordinance state whatever we want, and so we propose maps, we could certainly have our ordinance state whatever we want, and so we proposed a, an additional subsection five that say, that reads, "changes to the uniform codes, capital, uniform, capital codes, as identified in Calaveras County Code 15.04.50," which goes through and lists all of the different building codes that are, could possibly change. Did you want to add something there, Michelle?
No, I'm fine with that, and my issue wasn't really the tentative maps, it was more the term of development agreement. So whatever you guys come up with that addresses that issue, it's fine with me.
Well, I think the language that Julie has read covers that case, that, you know, we're going to say building codes will be applied at the time of permit.
Right, at the time of.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think that that was all. Did I miss anything?
There was, I think this person has a seven, but I think it's supposed to be 17. Dot 64 dot 070, effective date of development agreements. There was some discussion about putting in a time period when that recordation should take place, either by the county or the, you know, it's somebody party to the development agreement.
And we missed that in our discussion.
You know, 15 days, or I don't know. Are there time recordation?
When I have been involved in them, the developer actually had to record them, even though it was with the county, because the developer had the biggest interest in getting them recorded, and they had very short time periods in which to do it.
This is a language that's of our, the current code, and I don't know if we want to say it takes effect upon approval by the board. There's a very clear date, but maybe that's not.
I think you want it when it's recorded, because future folks can't find it otherwise.
So, I mean, what a reasonable time period. I don't, you know. There are deadlines for other recordations of other entitlements, aren't there? Don't you have like?
You know, I don't, I don't remember. I know in other areas of law, there are dates, deadlines for recording a document. I know buying a house, I had a deadline to record a document, but we could certainly do something where we add, upon this, the date of recordation, and in no event later than 10 business days or 15 business days.
The document shall be recorded within however many days of the approval, whatever.
Sure, we can add a sentence at the end that says that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. The agreement.
Leave it to Peter to what he thinks is reasonable.
It's a reasonable timeframe, yeah.
I mean, 15 days seems reasonable to me, because sometimes those people are out of town and have to do it in person.
And I think the point is you just don't want to stretch it on for months.
Right.
Yeah.
I think our normal, like, we use calendar days here, 15 calendar days is the normal time for an appeal process or something like that, so I think if we say 15 calendar days.
So the agreement shall be recorded within 15 calendar days of this approval?
Yes, I think that's good.
Okay.
Were there any others? That was, I think I, that was the only one I saw that was. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
I had one word change in the proposed resolution. Just grammar. The third whereas clause, where it says, "whereas the planning department and county council has proposed texts that more clearly outlines it, et cetera, with the intent of a development agreement mutually benefits," plural, I would change the "has proposed" to "have proposed," and the "benefits" to "benefit singular."
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about this proposed ordinance?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to thank you very much for this. It's a great improvement on the ordinance from reading, reading what it was before to reading all these proposed changes, the improvements, the corrections, the clarifications. It's just much improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a somewhat arcane section of.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Are we ready for the recommendation? I think we're ready, Peter.
So, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the board of supervisors take the following action. One, find that the proposed ordinance revising chapter 17.64 is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15301B3 CEQA guidelines, and adopt the proposed ordinance amending chapter 17.64 of the Calaveras County Code as amended today in the hearing. And there were one, two, three, four, five, six different changes that were made.
It's been moved.
It's been moved?
Uh, second.
And second, in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. So, once again, we have a public comment period. Anybody like to come on up? All right. Any reports?
Nothing really to report at this point in time. Still trying to work out all the loose ends on the general plan, still shooting for this month. Getting, what gray hair, it doesn't turn gray, it's getting grayer. But it's a lot of loose ends, a lot of things you think you have it, and then you realize, oh, I forgot about this, and it's just a lot of work. But still, still shooting for a target to getting released this month, as I said last month. It might be early December, but I'm still trying to get it before Thanksgiving, so.
Great, that's great.
So then we'll be looking at probably setting up some public workshops, informational meetings throughout the communities in maybe mid to late January, and then setting up joint meetings with the board. And I suspect there'll be probably pretty popular meetings, so we might want to find some larger venue to hold those meetings, maybe the town hall or someplace like that. So we'll be looking at, and that would be probably, so 90 days from when it's released, December, January, maybe end of February, that we'd start those.
Great, thank you.
It's the plan.
And our next planning commission meeting is December 11th?
Yes.
And that will be our only, that'll be our last meeting this year?
That'll be the last meeting of the year.
Okay. Any other comments by commissioners before we adjourn?
Just a reminder, I get all your applications in for the planning commission.
Oh, yes.
Bye.
Is there, is there a deadline?
December 4th or something? I sent it in the email that I sent to all of you.
Is it December 1st?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Same deadline as Peter has for the updated general plan release.
Yeah, they have to get to Diane by that date that I put in the email.
Okay, all right, so good reminder. You have received some, though?
I haven't received any.
Did we not send them to you?
You can, and I can forward them to Diane.
Oh, I think I sent mine to Diane directly.
Probably best to go directly to Diane, not that she would like to see.
Okay. Oh, I think it affects, okay, all right. Well, with that, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you very much.